Good evening, everyone, and welcome back. We are a few minutes late here for the start of our Monday, October 26th City Council Study Meeting, but we had a concurrent meeting with the HRA just preceding this, and we went along a little bit. So if you have tuned in for the study meeting, I apologize for the delay, and I appreciate your sticking with us. So I'd like to call this study meeting to order. Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the role of the City Council for this study meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga.
He may have stepped away. Let's come back to him.
Yeah. Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember Coulter.
Present.
Councilmember Lowman.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Bussie.
Here.
And Councilmember Beloga.
There is Councilmember Beloga. All seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present. For the study meeting, we've got three items on tonight's agenda. The first is the Proposed Ten-Year Capital Improvement Plan. And for those of you who are tuning in, you probably know and understand the Capital Improvement Plan is an annual document put together each and every year by the City of Bloomington. It's a planning document. It is not a hard and fast document. It isn't this is what we're exactly going to do. It is a planning document that we use to kind of guide our work and our ideas and our direction over the next 10 years, for this year, for the coming year, for the next 10 years. And it's an important document, and as I said, one that we do every year, and it's important for a variety of reasons, not the least of which, if beyond the planning aspect of it and understanding exactly where we're going, and it's also important as we look at different funding sources for some of the things that we talk about, if we don't have a plan put together, we are not able to apply for certain funding, whether it's at the state or the federal or from other sources. So it is an important document. It includes a lot. It includes a lot of big numbers, and a lot of those numbers will not be achieved, will not be attained, but it is a planning document, something that we look at and we try and plan around and use it to guide our development. So with that, I will call on our CFO, Lori Economy Scholler, to talk us through the Proposed Ten-Year Capital Improvement Plan.
Mayor Bussie, before Lori presents, may I interject for just a moment? I apologize. Can we do the approval of the agenda that is now being added to the agendas for study meetings as well as regular meetings? That's item two.
And so it is. Thank you very much, Ms. Christensen. The approval of the agenda, which we haven't done in the past for our study meetings, so we will approve that for our study meetings. Counsel, do you have any additions or subtractions to the agenda for this evening? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda for our study meeting.
So moved, Martin?
Beloga, second.
We got a motion and a second to approve this evening's agenda. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga.
Right.
Carter. Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Coulter. Oh, thank you. Councilmember Coulter.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. And we officially have an agenda on a 7-0 vote. Thank you all very much for that, and thanks for the reminder, Ms. Christensen. I appreciate that. Now, if we could go to item 3.1, our Proposed Ten-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Ms. Economy Scholler, good evening.
Ms. Mayor and Counsel, I'm just doing a sound check. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and your screen is up right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I will apologize. I tried to have video earlier of myself today, and my computer is not working well. So other than being able to share the presentation, you won't be able to see me, but you can hear me. The CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, one of the council's strategic priorities, the community amenities is just one of those. And within this document, you will see different projects that go and encapsulate all the other community strategic priorities. And moving forward on that, our overview within this presentation will go through the CIP process, a little bit on the executive summary. Most of this is within the document, project updates from 2020, how we changed some of the processes in 2020 for our new document, some highlighted areas, the funding sources, bonding areas, and a debt table. Again, tonight is just a draft document, and we want your feedback on this. It would be moving the process forward through the Planning Commission next, and then back to council in December. With that, I'll move on to the CIP process. As the mayor stated, this is a planning tool. We do a long-range piece of physical planning and financial projections. We look at all the projects that may come up and what their costs might be until we start getting closer to the date of that project. We won't know the actual cost. So part of the planning is maybe hiring a consultant, maybe staff focusing their time on that project to get a better idea that we are close to what that cost would be. Projects in the CIP are projects that are over $50,000, and that could be initiated within the 10-year period. The executive summary just kind of highlights the different seven categories and projects that are over a million and above. Staff and the community should understand that just because it's in the CIP, there is no guarantee that that project will move forward until the council moves it forward and all the funding sources are in place. And as we go into the procurement area, if the project is below $175,000, the city manager can make that authorization to put the project forward. And so those are the smaller ones. Anything above $175,000, it would come before the city council for their approval to move forward. In the executive summary for 2020, this is for a period of time of 2021 through 2030, and looking at all the different categories currently for this period of time, for that total $651,000 of projects. When I looked at the one for a year ago, the number of projects there were in the $644 million worth of projects. So as you would see, projects are coming and going, the dollar amounts are changing. You know, there's inflation. As we see new things, they would get added and changed. So this is just summarizing in total, the cost would be $651 million over this 10-year period if all the projects were done. The future has $186 million worth of projects. One of the pieces that we worked on this spring with the COVID was the projects that were planned for 2020, and those that were halted or put on, pushed back to see if we could work on it or not. We have this document out on the finance website that gives a status of where the 2020 projects are. All of the red ones are on hold. The green ones are proceeding. Some of the single management improvements is still under review. So some of the green ones are all done or in finalizing, but the red ones were all put on hold and deferred to another time. So the council saw the previous CIP process back in January and approved the document in April. During that period of time, we looked at a number of different things of what we would change, and part of that process is making the CIP process concurrent with the budget process. So as we come through, and on December 21st, when the council would have the final budget, we would also be having the public hearing with the CIP document. Part of the conversation, you may recall, the spring the council had with staff was providing feedback on the prioritization process that we used for our previous document. And they gave council papers, many ideas of what they would like. We initiated a committee, and the committee created a new methodology of prioritization. The council approved that prioritization in early June. As the departments started to create their 2021 budgets and 2022 projected budgets, they created their CIP document pieces. And then we also had each department that had submitted projects, they had to rank those. And during that ranking process, they brought in both Emma Strauss from the sustainability piece and Faith Jackson for the racial equity piece to make sure those pieces not only were prioritization scored, but as we look at the projects and their timing of those, those elements were discussed during the internal department review. Then each of the departments submitted that to the committee, and we looked through those, and there was some reshuffling and where we could financially place some of those. So that's how this new document and prioritization evaluation changed throughout the summer. What we're looking at in the 2021 budgets that were submitted, the council has seen several of those, is that we are looking to get a council when they adopt the CIP for 2021 through 2030, somewhat of a green light that they can start their planning piece, that they can look at getting the feasibility, they can look at creating bid packages and just getting to some of the pieces, depending again on the procurement dollar amounts, some of that bid package and design costs for a consultant may come before the council before they can even move forward with the planning piece. But staff need to start preparing to look at some of the items that are in this document for the next two years. Now, alternative transportation category, when I looked at a previous year, several of the projects that were handled moved into future years. And so there are no projects in 2021 or 2022 in the alternative transportation areas. They're gathering funds to bike way pathways and bridges for those areas in future years. They need to accumulate funds before they can move forward on any of that category. City facilities, when we looked at the city facilities for the facility fund, we looked at the Public Works Garage. There were some questions on the Public Works roof for that. And then when we look at 2022, there's a number of projects there with the Ice Garden. We'll be looking at hopefully a state bonding request with that one before we move forward. Fire Station 4 rebuild and some solar installation on Public Works and other city facilities. Here's one of the 2020 projects that it finalized and opened. It was Fire Station 3. It was a very interesting photo from this reception. The park development area, there's a number of projects for that in 2021. The main one there that we would be looking at is just a portion, the next phase of the Red Scott projects. It's not the entire Red Scott area, and that would be looking at some fencing, lighting, netting, and tennis courts. But it's again, the next phase of Red Scott. It's not the entire finished product there. In 2022, we would be looking at Bryant Park Phase 1 and some maintenance on the Normandale Lake Maintenance Building. Just some updates on where Red Scott looks like now that it's been open. On the sewer projects in 2021, one of the largest areas there we could look at is the 4,008, almost 4,009 at the 28th Avenue. This is for the expansion, the sewer expansion in that area, and the funding for that is coming from the South Loop, a capital improvement fund. And then there is the normal payment management program for water and sewer, storm water. Again, in 2022, further expansion on American Boulevard for sewer capacity, and again, South Loop funds are paying for those improvements. Within the South Loop Port Authority area, most of their projects are below $1 million. And as we look at the cost projections, I believe, you'll see more of that for our Thursday evening meeting. They would be having smaller projects there both in '21 and Surface transportation, we have payment management, and that's all sources there for the payment management. Some overlay of streets, which is normal payment management, and the final improvements hopefully in the 106 and 35 W street project. 2022, $19 million worth of projects there, the largest being the PMP street reconstruction and overlay. As you know, the overlay is being financed by multiple sources, the largest being franchise fees. And currently, the franchise fees are coming in consistently as budgeted. There hasn't been a downturn in those, some of those fees. So in the two-year, just by expense of different categories, 32% of the funding would be on city facilities, 35% on surface transportation, storm water 24. As you can just see, the pieces of this, the largest is again, surface transportation. And again, looks like this was doubled. No, that's just 2022. On funding sources, I wanted to break this down a little more for the council. What we would look at is mainly city funds, what we have in fund balances, or what we would get through in city funds through the South Loop moving monies into, for the sewer capacity, funds in the utility funds, grant funds. We would be looking to issue CIP bonds in 2022 for the Fire Station 4. And then charter bonds, depending on, this would be the Red Scott, the 2.6 million, and the 23 million would include BIG. And I'll go into more detail on the bonds in the next couple slides. But we would have other funds here too for that. So a total of $46 million worth of projects in '21 and $73.5 million for 2022, if all these projects move forward. So the charter bonds in 2021 would be the $2.6 million for Red Scott improvements. We kind of broke those down into the tennis courts and the next piece, the next phase of Red Scott. And that would be 2.6 million. So the projects that we would bond for in '21 impact our tax levy for '22. Those that we issue bonds for in '22 will impact our tax levy for '23. So again, motor vehicle is just a placeholder. So depending on the council's decision, if we, on motor vehicle, this project would, may stay, may move, may disappear. Public health was mainly for their ability with COVID and how we've changed some of our work dynamics of being remote. The possibility that they could rent maybe a space that's become vacant is out there, and we would be looking to see what we could do there to continue having public health maybe in a more centrally located area with better transit abilities there. Again, on BIG, we would only move forward there if we had state bonding. It's just such a large number for that. On the CIP bonds, there would be no CIP bonds in 2021. In 2022, this would be for Fire Station 4, should that move forward. And then the payment management, this is normally where we have 75%. It's tax levy supported of 7.1 million, and then 25% would be special assessments. And just letting the council know, on what we had for our 2020 bonds, our prepayments of our special assessments are coming in well ahead of schedule on that. So the normal, where we have prepayments on our 2021, excuse me, 2020 bonds, people are right on schedule paying off those assessments ahead of time. So I've put in a couple different debt service schedules, just to give you an idea of, you know, of course, this is all draft, and depending on markets and structures and elections, this can all change. But if we issued debt now for, say, the project for Red Scott, and it falls in between these numbers, our estimated debt service would be about $267,000 roughly, and that would be an under 21 levy. Currently, when we look at 2021, 1% of the tax levy is $650,000, which is approximately $1 in tax levy for the median valued home. With a estimated debt service of $267,000, if the interest rate is 1%, that would be .41 to the median valued home. If that, we were at 2%, that would be .44. Just to give you some idea, I do have a 10-year and a 20-year. We tend to keep our roads, our parking lots, our park improvements at a 10-year duration because of where we value them and our depreciation schedules, and we look at buildings and pool shells and things like that under a 20-year duration. So again, when the council looks at this in December, we would be looking for the adoption of the CIP plan and allowing staff to move forward with the planning phase of some of these projects. And so there's a lot of information in the CIP, and there's been questions the council has, and I'd like to see what else, any other directions or thoughts the council has with what is in the CIP. If need be, I can pull up the CIP, but I'd like to see what kind of questions and feedback the council would like to give us.
Thank you, Ms. Economy Scholler. Counsel, questions on the presentation or specific to the CIP? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just two quick ones here, and I appreciate staff got me some additional information earlier today that was really helpful. With regards to facilities improvements, in particular around Schneider Black Box Theater, I understand there's some constraints in terms of the type, size, complexity of productions we're able to do, say, for example, with our current lighting system that we have. I'm just wondering, making those investments this year, does staff have an idea of when we're going to see a return of large-scale touring productions, kind of on the backside of COVID-19? And is this, are these improvements selected for 2021 to kind of dovetail with the return of those productions, or do we have a couple of years of wiggle room?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Martin, to the question of whether we have an idea of when we might return to regular scheduling of productions, the answer is no. We just simply can't predict when that's going to happen in the current environment, and our partners in the arts organizations really don't have the answer to that either. It's going to entirely be dependent on when it's safe to bring people back into large gathering, or at least enough to financially justify the cost of production.
Thank you very much. And then just one other quick one. Obviously, we have a pretty comprehensive Parks Master Planning process going on right now that I'm hoping and assuming are going to have some cool investment opportunities on the backside. Do we have an idea when we're going to start seeing some of those projects appearing in out years in the CIP?
Ms. Economy Scholler.
Mayor and Councilmember Martin, I will check in with the status of the park improvement master plan and see where that might change the things. But I think the Park Master Plan and the city manager might want to jump into, it's much more global. I think as they would do Red Scott, the next phase, they would need to consult to make sure everything that is at Red Scott needs to be there and what needs to be there. So when all the different park projects are coming up, they will need a little bit more focus on that specific park versus the higher level where the Park Master Plan is at. So I think there's a lot of planning, even as we go year by year, on each individual park for what that park needs currently now and into the future.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
I know that our Park and Rec Director, Ann Catry, is on as well. Ann, can you add I think Ann is loading in here. There she is. I believe you're muted. We seem to be having some technical issues. Why don't we move on? Maybe we can double back to you if we need to. Ms. Wilson?
Ann, this is Chris. I think you're not muted in WebEx, but maybe your computer is muted?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
There you are.
Sorry about that. One of those headset issues again. I apologize for that. We are at about the 50% point in the Park System Master Plan, and what you will see reflected in the first 10 years of the plan is definitely influenced by the community engagement and input that we have received so far. I think it's safe to say that because we are only at the 50%, that we will see projects move and change as we continue to work through the Park System Master Plan. But how the first 10 years of the CIP is laid out in terms of having a planning year for projects, and then the next year, doing a significant project, like how we have the Bryant Park project laid out over two years, and then the Moir Park project laid out over a couple of years, is a definite reflection of the master planning process so far. So it's definitely influencing, but we will definitely see changes in the CIP as we complete the plan.
Councilmember Martin, is that an answer to your question?
Yeah, that's terrific. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for jumping in. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a few, couple quick questions here, and I just want to clarify, first of all, something that I thought I heard. Lori, I thought I heard you say that the projects at BIG, I think it was a total of 16 million, that the plan right now is that that would be contingent upon receiving state bonding dollars. Is that
Mayor, Councilmember Coulter.
Ms. Economy Scholler, please.
When I look at all the, when we look within the CIP document, there are probably about eight individual pieces to that 16 million. One of the largest pieces of that is the refrigeration of the rinks and the chemicals that are used in those rinks. So if all other aside, that smaller piece might still have to be done internally with city bonding if there is nothing else on that available. Ann Catry, our Director of Parks Recreation, probably has greater detail on that than I do. But if we can put this forward to a bonding request and get all those pieces done at one time, the refrigeration, the size of the rinks, how the rinks are structured, and the pieces and amenities around that would really be influenced all at one time is the best process, you know, best cost for dollars.
Ms. Catry?
We are currently doing an evaluation at BIG with HGA Architects, and we're partnering with our main City of Bloomington user groups to determine the facilities that they need at that facility, some changes that they would like to see. We're looking at operational changes and efficiencies, just how we can improve the overall user experience at BIG along with what Lori mentioned in terms of the mechanical equipment that has to be changed out at BIG. So we're going to be providing a couple of different options for how we can move forward for improvements at BIG. One option will be, this is the equipment that we have to change out. R22 is no longer in production. Changing out those rinks is not an option. It has to be It has to be done at some point in the very near future, in addition to some other mechanical units there that have just exceeded their life expectancy. So we'll be providing that plan laid out, and then we will also be providing the kind of stepped up planned approach where we could provide an enhanced user experience and more efficient operations at BIG. And so I think that's a little bit more explanation of what Lori was explaining, some things that we have to do and some things that we would really like to do eventually at BIG.
Okay, so just, just to clarify that, because I guess I'm a little confused by that. It sounded to me like, I, you know, I get that there are some things that are sort of a have to be done, you know, sort of regardless of where the funding comes from. But I, you know, I certainly recall past discussions that we've had that have centered around a state bonding request for BIG, being that, you know, we know, I don't recall specifically if it's actually a majority or at least a significant percentage of the users of BIG are not Bloomington residents, that it is in many ways a statewide asset. So I, you know, I guess I would just encourage us to pursue that aggressively. I think it is something sort of worth that state bonding investment. And then, I guess, Ann, actually, as long as you're here, Ann, I know you and I exchanged some emails, but I'm wondering, because I'm sure others on the council have gotten some questions about this, about, if you'd just be willing to explain a little bit about how this relates to the Parks Master Planning process in terms of outdoor recreation and natural resources? Because I know there's been some discussion on social media as well about that.
Most certainly, Councilmember Coulter, members of the council. First, just regarding your last comment, absolutely, we intend to work very closely with the city council on making a recommendation on state bonding for BIG. You know, the big question is going to be, what is that bonding request going to look like? But absolutely, we will, we will work very aggressively on that initiative. As it relates to outdoor recreation and natural resources and the Park System Master Plan, we have heard loud and clear from our residents during the first many months of our community engagement, that natural resources are incredibly important to the quality of life for the residents of Bloomington. And they're concerned that some of our natural areas are not in good condition, and they're concerned that the city isn't investing enough in enhancing, improving, and continuing to add additional natural resource elements to the park system. Additionally, we have heard from our residents that they feel that our parks are dated and have many of the same amenities in many parks, and they would prefer that we look at some of the amenities that we have in some of the parks and better match the needs of current park users and families. So we will definitely be working on both of those initiatives very significantly as we move forward with any park renovation projects. One example we have coming up in the near CIP, two actually, one is at Bryant Park and another is at Moir Park. What we would intend to do with both of those Park Master Plans is have a significant component that would include restoration and natural resources. So we would be looking at improving and enhancing what we have, and we would also be looking at areas in the parks that we could add additional natural resource amenities. So while we might not have those areas specifically called out in the CIP, it definitely will be a significant portion of the planning process and will be a significant portion of any Park Master Plan renovation that we do moving forward. I see natural resources and also ADA accessibility being just two of the key components that we will be considering and being incorporated in every park renewal project that we work on.
Thank you for that. And then just one final comment, and I know there are others. And this is an issue that Councilmember Beloga has raised before, so forgive me, Councilmember Beloga, if I'm stealing your thunder here. But I noticed that we do indeed still have a creekside replacement in the CIP. And I guess I'm just a little, you know, we have not had any serious conversations about any kind of replacement or successor, or whatever you want to call it, for creekside for quite some time. You know, and I guess I'm just a little wary of including something like that because it's such a high-profile item, because it's such a frankly expensive item. And it's something I know that there is obviously a lot of community interest in. I'm a little bit wary of including something like that, particularly given the size and the need to prioritize. I'm a little wary of including that without having a firmer grasp on what that looks like. So that's more just the nature, in the nature of a comment. But I just wanted to put that out there.
Ms. Catry, any comments?
We have included just a placeholder figure for a creekside replacement, and we have that in 2025. And we came up with the $46.5 million placeholder amount from the planning process that we did last year. That would be a medium-sized community center. If you recall, we looked at a small, medium, and large-sized community center that could possibly fit on the creekside site. And we literally just put a number in there for a placeholder, just to keep it in front of mind for folks and to show the need of the creekside replacement. But it certainly isn't intended to show that any additional work or planning has been done on that project.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nathan, you took my first item of discussion, but I appreciate you doing that. Makes my job easier that way. So I won't go over that again, but Ann and I, I understand what you said about the Parks Master Plan being about 50% complete. Just for looking at this, I expect to see a significant, excuse me, a significant number as far as what the cost to complete the vision from that plan will be. And prioritizing that will be an important item, both for the annual share of the cost that comes out of the levy, and then the share that we expect to finance through bonding. And I'm giving my pitch here that I believe our community needs and wants these kinds of facilities and to be sooner rather than later. And I can't help but think that today is not the time with the economic situation that is facing a good percentage of our population, but to look at some point in the future down the road for a total bonding bill to accomplish the needs of our Parks and Rec area. Because I don't see that in our lifetimes, we're going to get there, you know, with a small amount of CIP funding here and there that we've been doing. So it's more of a comment than question, but I wanted to take that opportunity, this opportunity to get that out there.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Council, any additional questions? So I have one, as I mentioned earlier, this is a planning document. And I think as Ms. Economy Schuler went through, she again stressed it was a planning document and the steps that would be taken, that would be necessary to approve or get to any of these projects. But Mr. Verbrugge, let me run it past you, if you could, just to clarify for everyone, both on the council and folks who are listening. So we have this planning document, we've got all these potential projects in here, we've got all these big dollars in here. But if, for example, the economy stays in the dumps because of COVID-19, or it's a slow recovery even after we have a vaccine, what are the steps that the city in general needs to go through, whether it's staff, whether it's any of our commissions, whether it's the city council, where we get from this plan to approval and shovels in the ground?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, one thing I do want to note is a little bit of the process change that the council and the staff have put together with the timeline for approving the CIP. Council understands this, but for the benefit of folks who may be watching, it used to be that the CIP was adopted several months after the budget was adopted, or at least a couple of months after the budget was adopted. And often, we would already be in planning for some of the items in that year. And one of the things the council requested was to make sure that the CIP conversation and review was occurring at the same time that the budget process was, or that they're roughly traveling together. This year, that's what will happen, is you will have the opportunity to have the budget approved or nearly approved at the time that the CIP comes back for final approval at the second meeting in December, as we're expecting early December for the Planning Commission to review the document. What that means is you'll have a better idea of the full budget picture for the coming year, 2021, and a pretty good idea for 2022. Many of the projects that are in here have funding sources that are reviewed with the council during that budget process. Facilities Fund is an example, pays for some of the improvements to the public buildings. So the council will have all the information and a knowledge base as we approve the document of where things stand. And then as we get into the projects, for the larger projects where we have to go out and competitively bid those, those bids are awarded. So there's a process where staff will be preparing specs for a project and then putting together an RFP. And during the next couple of years, we will be, I think, putting closer scrutiny on these larger projects and then checking in with the city council prior to moving forward to them, rather than having an award for bidding a project come to the council just because it's been in the planning document. Often, the first year of the CIP is generally assumed to be projects that are greenlit. And in the past, I think that there's been an understanding that we would move a little bit more fluidly through that, but recognizing we have a different economy right now, there'll be, I think it's safe to say, we'll have a couple of steps in the process here for council to review.
Thank you, that's helpful. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me. I just had a quick question. I wondered if somebody could explain the change with regards to the pool vessel.
Councilmember Nelson, you were cutting in and out again. If I could ask you to repeat the question and if I could ask you to use your stadium voice, because we're having a hard time hearing you right now.
I apologize. Could somebody explain to the community change with regards to the pool vessel?
I was hearing something about the pool vessel, so maybe, Mr. Verbrugge, can you explain the whole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, we have our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Catry, is keyed up again to talk about the pool vessel.
Ms. Catry? Thanks.
Thank you very much for the question, Councilmember Nelson, members of the council. We did an evaluation of the pool shell just a few weeks ago. We hired, we hired a company who specializes, an engineering firm who specializes in pool equipment and pool shells. They did an evaluation of the pool shell, and the really good news for us is that because of very solid maintenance and, and painting and caulking over the last 20-plus years, the pool shell itself continues to be in really good condition. And in fact, we're waiting for the final report, but they said that the pool shell itself has at least an additional 20-plus years of life in it. They said that it is in much better shape than most pools of its age, and it really is a tremendous credit to the staff that has been maintaining that pool for all of this time. So what we did in the CIP, we made kind of a last-minute change. We took out the item that was scheduled in the CIP to replace the pool shell, and instead we put a placeholder in there for $5 million. There were a variety of different pool projects that were scheduled there, everything from replacing some slides to concession improvements, a variety of different things. So we put a placeholder in the CIP for $5 million for the year 2026, with the hope that in 2024, we would do a study of the pool, engage our residents and engage our users, and find out what they would like to see for the future of that pool, and figure out ways that we can make smart investments to the pool for a lot less money and to have it last for at least another 20-plus years. Our hope with that study is that we will also look at the surrounding area immediately right around the pool, including the parking lots and some of the, some of the other amenities that are right around there, and could possibly make some improvements to some park amenities at the same time. So the plan was to do that study and community engagement in 2024 and hopefully make some improvements at the pool in 2026.
Thank you. And I, Councilmember Nelson, I hope you heard that. Great overview, thanks. That's a good explanation, Ms. Catry. Thanks so very much. Council, any additional questions? Councilmember Loman?
I could just say briefly, just a credit to the staff, this has come a long ways, this whole process. Over my short time here on council, I could certainly say that this is, you know, each year it's getting better, it's kind of incremental piece. I know, Mayor, you've mentioned that before in the past, but I just want to just thank the staff for their hard work on this, this whole process. I know we've got a long ways to go, but wow, we've come a long ways.
I would agree. Thinking back to when I first started working on the council and seeing the process, it was a bit more cumbersome than it is now. So thanks for the staff for streamlining and making it much more understandable, not only to us here on the council, but also I think to the members of the community. Well done.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Loman, one observation I would want to make, I know the council's aware of this, but again, for the benefit of folks who have been watching this process or are interested in it. And when we started, there was a question by the council about how we prioritize items within the, within the CIP. And the staff worked really well to come up with a criteria, assortment of criteria that would be applied. And I think our team that puts together the CIP and all of the staff and the various departments who contributed to it do a nice job of understanding what those criteria are and then making decisions based on that. To the Councilmember Loman's point about this being a continuous work in process or progress, I think the, the next step for us is to actually get to a point where we're able to prioritize across departments, because much of the prioritization that has occurred has been within departments or within the various funds. And that's just, like I say, more work that needs to be done as we continue to develop the document and, you know, how we, how we do good decision-making. But that's consistent across the board for our budgeting and everything else, too. So thank you for the recognition, Councilmember Loman.
Council, any final questions on this? Comments? Comments? If not just a review here, December 3, the Planning Commission will take this up. They will consider this and look at this. And it will be back before the council as a public hearing on December 21. So those will be the next opportunities for the 10-year CIP for any public comment or information or questions on this one. So thank you very much to staff for pulling this all together. I know it's a lot of work. It's a big document, and appreciate all you've done with it.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
With that, we can move to item 3.2 on our study session agenda, which is the temporary pandemic response housing. A big discussion of, a topic of discussion here in the city, and I think everywhere, frankly, since the pandemic has started. Ms. Worthington, I believe you are going to lead us through this one. I see Mr. Markergard here as well. And actually, there's a lot of folks, I think, who are going to chime in on this one. But Ms. Worthington, thanks for being here this evening, please.
Thank you, Mayor Bussie and council members. Glenn, do you want to start the presentation? Or I guess maybe Chris is running it tonight. So this evening, we're going to give you an update on the situation around hotels and their use as temporary shelters for homeless individuals. And this evening, we're going to give you kind of an overview of where things stand today. If you could advance to the next slide, please. One of the things that we want to highlight for you is that there's really a convergence of factors that are happening right now in Bloomington and in the wider metro area. I would say, generally in the two largest counties, but certainly in the seven-county metro as a whole, we're seeing increased community need for shelter. We're seeing that the pandemic has reduced the capacity of existing shelters. And let me just tell you a little bit more about that. The way that congregate care shelters work is that typically, they're not like a single-room occupancy. They're usually a very large congregate facility where people sleep either on cots or on mats on the floor, and they're separated by just a few feet. And as you can imagine, that is not an ideal situation for trying to limit the spread of COVID in those settings. And then, there are greater availability of hotel rooms right now, because our tourism sector has really suffered during the pandemic with less travel and less tourism. And so there are a lot of hotel rooms available. And then there's funding coming into the picture here through cares and through emergency assistance dollars through Hennepin County and other sources. And so there's this convergence of factors that are really influencing shelter and the need for additional shelter, and how shelter is being located right now. Next slide, please. And so the city's objectives in looking at this work are really threefold. One, to meet the housing needs of residents, both here in Bloomington and residents who may choose Bloomington right now, both from a rental and perhaps from a shelter standpoint. To maintain city and council discretion. So really, what we mean here is that the city has regulations, zoning laws, and other regulations that regulate licensed hotels as a use in the city. We want to maintain the discretion of our local laws. And finally, and certainly, most importantly, we want to preserve safety for the residents of Bloomington, whether they're living in a hotel right now or living here permanently. Next slide, please. And so these are some of the questions or approaches and issues that I'd like to suggest that you consider as we walk you through the presentation. We'll come back to these at the end. We want to restrict future uses of hotels as shelters while maintaining the current shelter room count through the middle of next year, through the middle of 2021. So again, keeping the number of hotel rooms that are being utilized right now as shelter to the number that they are today, no more than that. But also then figuring out a way to get people through the winter months. That's really under that community needs heading. Under preserving safety, we want to consistently apply a progressive enforcement model to ensure public safety at all hotel shelter locations, both formal and informal. And we want to acknowledge that the level of service expectations will be different at those facilities based on additional needs at those locations. And then, under maintaining discretion, we really want to talk to you tonight about preserving through active enforcement, zoning, and land use regulations with regard to these uses. And then, when necessary, and only after progressive enforcement takes place, pursuing revocation of licensure for hotels that do not comply with city regulations. So those are some of the things this evening that we'd like you to think about as we go through the next few slides. I'm going to hand it over to Glenn Markergard, and he's going to walk you through some of the issues related to Hennepin County, St. Stevens, and Our Savior, and the hotel shelters that they are currently operating.
Good evening, Mr. Markergard, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bussie, council members. And actually, before I speak, Chief Potts has a little update from your last week's presentation. Thanks.
Good evening, Chief Potts, welcome.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Glenn. Mayor and council, I just have a couple of slides here, and a little bit of, a bit of a little repeat from last week, and then an update. So on the screen now, you'll see we continue to track calls for service. And as this presentation goes, you'll start to kind of understand why we're tracking these particular hotels. And so what we've done in this particular slide is added another week's worth of data. We continue to watch the calls for service very closely at the hotels. Hennepin County currently having contracts at those two hotels in the center, the Holiday Inns, the Comfort Inn, a hotel where we have some nonprofits operating out of that. That has been an address where we're trying to develop some protocols to address a high call volume. And we are a couple of weeks into some pretty significant changes. And as you saw on the one weekly that was put out last week, or what you might have saw is that, while it's only been seven to 10 days, we've seen at least one week's worth of data where we've had a reduction in calls. So a little bit early to call them true bona fide successes, but early indications of some of those improvements that indicate they might be working. So Glenn, if you would, please advance to the next slide. This slide is, again, a little bit of a repeat from last week. It shows you the month, the month call for service at these, at the hotels that you saw on the previous screen. Now, what I've added here is, in those, where those asterisks are, is that shows you the medical calls as a subset of the overall calls for service. So on the Comfort Inn, going down to April, three of the 51 calls were medicals. And then going down to September, you see there at 12. At the Comfort Inn, that represents around 25% of the calls for service overall that are going on at the Comfort Inn. Now, if you move over two columns to the Holiday Inns, that those two locations, we're tracking the medicals as a specific type of call. At the Holiday Inn Airport, they represent around half currently, overall, about half of the calls. And then at the Holiday Inn Express on Johnson, they are closer between 50 and 60% on average of the calls for service at that location. The columns that we don't track them, they're closer to the statistical average of the Comfort Inn, around 25%. And so what we're seeing at the Holiday Inns is it's a different population that are staying there, and therefore, the type of calls and the services needed from the city and other places just tend to be more kind of in the medical call for service versus some of the other types of calls for service that we're currently responding to at the Holiday Inn, the La Quinta and the Super 8. So that's a quick update from where we were last week. This chart shows you another week's worth of data. Last week, we stopped at, actually, the 13th. So we've added 10 more days of data to this to give you just a good kind of running idea of the number of calls for service that we're going to at the hotels. We continue to work with our crime prevention staff, along with the, our crime prevention staff continues to work closely with Hennepin County, and also with the management from the hotel, from the Comfort Inn specifically, but also had several meetings with Hennepin County to try to build a very robust safety and security plan for each of these locations. We'll continue to do that until we get our arms fully around the issues that we're seeing on an ongoing basis at these locations. That's the two slides that I have for now. Stand for questions. I think we're going to do that later, after the presentation is done. So Glenn, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Chief Potts. Yes, we'll save our questions for the end of the presentation, if we could, council. Mr. Markergard?
All right, Mayor Bussie, council members. So Bloomington has 47 hotels, over 9,700 hotel rooms. And you can see the distribution of hotels in Bloomington here, with a vast majority along the 494 corridor, one exception along 35W. We do have one of those 47 hotels, which is currently closed on a temporary basis. That's the Courtyard by Marriott. And then we have another hotel, 48th Hyatt House, which is under construction. Now, given the low demand for hotel use, we have seen a variety of new uses appear at hotels. And one of those that we've talked a lot about is the Hennepin County use. They are leasing both the Holiday Inn and Holiday Inn Express, the entire hotel, as we've discussed, for homeless shelter purposes on a temporary basis. Hennepin County is also looking at acquiring the Extended Stay America Hotel on Windale in America, and I'll go into more detail on that in a little bit. But that, their hope is to replace the lease that they have at Holiday Inn Express, which would end at the end of 2020. And then they hope to keep the lease at Holiday Inn on 35W through June 1 of 2021, and then hope to use the Extended Stay America for up to two years, depending on the duration of the pandemic. Then, in addition to that, we're starting to see hotels used by a variety of nonprofits, including St. Stevens, Our Savior, Zaccar, YMCA, Minnesota Assistance Council for Veterans. And these nonprofits are leasing blocks of rooms, in some cases, large blocks, and in other cases, small blocks, for use by people with housing instability. And hotels that were aware of this leasing of blocks of rooms include the Comfort Inn, Super 8, and Extended Stay America. So while this use is occurring, the hotels are also open for business and have regular customers as well. And then a third, relatively newer, at least in its scope, use of hotels is as-long-term housing. And Environmental Health recently did a survey of all hotels in the city and found that 25 hotels had at least one resident who was there for 30 days or longer in terms of their stay. So some hotels, it's a very low number, other hotels, it's a much higher number. But at this point, I will turn it over to Lynn Moore to talk more about the survey that was completed.
Good evening, Ms. Moore, welcome.
Good evening, council. Hope you can hear me.
We can indeed, thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
So we conducted a survey on October 16th and 19th by phone, calling every hotel in the city and asking a series of questions. And what we learned from calling is, you know, we were asking a variety of things, anything from security to room rental, you know, rates of, you know, what you're charging for a night's stay. But as a neat summary of, you know, just kind of diving deeper into, you know, how many rooms in the city are you really being used for stays of 30 days or more, is, you know, what we kind of were concentrating on. So obviously, in Hennepin County, in the two hotels that they are renting the entire building, they have 326 rooms. The other shelters combined, 186 rooms. And then, individuals who aren't part of a nonprofit or shelter, they have a contract directly with the hotel for their room, is another 146. So as you can see, in the 28 hotels, on the days that we call, reported, you know, that there were 658 rooms that people were living, you know, living in, staying in more than 30 days, making up just under 7% of all hotel rooms available to the public right now, or just hotel rooms in the city. And again, that was, you know, of the 46 licensed and opened hotel rooms. And it was, you know, very interesting to talk to many of our managers about, you know, some of the things they were seeing and collect this information. So the survey was definitely, you know, very worthwhile to do.
All right. Moving on to zoning requirements, one of the important differentiations is in terms of use. So if we were to compare hotel use with other more traditional residential uses, such as multiple-family residential and congregate living, some of the differences include the following. So sleeping purposes only, that's the intent for hotel rooms, not intended for long-term residential use. And then, in addition to that, hotels have short-term stay requirements in the zoning ordinance. So under 30 days is the time duration in the zoning ordinance. And then hotels are allowed in commercial zoning districts. Whereas multiple-family residential, their zoning requirements are for full kitchens in each unit. We have minimum size requirements that are quite a bit higher than hotel size requirements. So examples would be apartments, condominiums, cooperatives, and multiple-family residential is allowed in multiple-family zoning districts, as well as in mixed-use zoning districts. And then we have congregate living, which is a residential use. A big difference being that there are shared services, and typically, that is dining service with congregate living. Conditional use permit is typically required. And examples would include boarding homes, nursing homes, and shelters. And these uses are conditional uses in the multi-family zoning districts in Bloomington. So in addition to the differences we talked about with kitchen requirements, minimum floor areas, and the maximum stay limit that applies at hotels, other differences include open space requirements that apply to residential but not hotel. Parking requirements are higher for residential uses. And then Bloomington requires both enclosed parking and storage space for residential, but not for hotels.
Licensing requirements, license is very important when we deal with hotels or multifamily housing. What a license really helps us do is get into the buildings to do inspections. And we do different types of inspections, whether it's pre-licensing, annual routine, or responding to complaints. So the main reason that, you know, we want to do inspections and uphold standards are really centered around health, safety, and building maintenance. The main categories of license types, and, you know, it's one thing to talk about uses, and Glenn will talk about uses. I tend to talk more about licenses. But the ways that we license these different uses is we have a hotel license that, and the food service license, both are delegated from the Minnesota Department of Health under our delegation agreement. But then we have rental housing licenses. But then we have rental housing licenses, and those are in city code. And the two that, you know, would relate most closely maybe to a hotel conversion, you know, we're looking at a multifamily. So a multifamily license is like what apartment buildings have, where you have five or more dwelling units in a building. But each dwelling unit can, you know, people can live in it independently. They have a full kitchen. But there's also a category of rental housing where you have group housing. And probably one of the more common is, you know, you'll hear the zoning use of a congregate. But we talk in licensing more about housing with services buildings. And those tend to be buildings where there might be a State Department of Health license, maybe it's for those services, like, you know, you think about assisted living, where people have sleeping rooms and a bathroom, but their food service is done in a in a in in a dining room. And then, when you look at food service licenses, so most of our hotels have some kind of food service license, even if they serve a continental breakfast, they're they're going to have a food service license. And then all group housing rental licensed buildings with eleven or more beds in them, they're going to have a commercial kitchen or a food service to to feed the folks that that live there. So license requirements are, you know, one way where we can get in, see the buildings, and have some controls and and they're pretty much easier to enforce than zoning code most of the time. That's all I have for this slide.
All right. So we do have some proposed zoning amendments coming forward. Very quickly, the City Council Public Hearing would be November ninth, and then the Planning Commission, November fifth. Ahead of that, the purpose of the proposed amendments is there's there's multiple purposes, one of which is to further clarify the definitions that apply. And then to create a new use category, which would be called Temporary Pandemic Response Housing. And that's defined here on the side of the screen as a building used to house individuals or families to reduce the transmission of disease within the community during a pandemic. So that could be housing people with housing instability during a pandemic, could be quarantine space, or it could be more of a bubble where you're trying to isolate a group of people to avoid the pandemic. You know, think of the NBA had their recent bubble in Orlando. So the intent is to allow this new use, so Temporary Pandemic Response Housing as an interim use. And only in the RM fifty zoning district, which is a multiple family zoning district. Then the ordinance also creates standards for this new use, including a two year time limit that would apply to any interim use permit. Having a security plan submitted that would be approved, reviewed and approved by the police chief. Requirements for management and operational plan. And then a requirement that it not be mixed with any other uses on site, such as a mixture between shelter and hotel on the same site. This could be the only use on the site. So another kind of tangential, somewhat related issue is the conversion of hotels to residential uses on a permanent basis. And this is something we're seeing strong market interest in. On the buyer's side, there is interest today because the multifamily market remains strong, strong demand for housing. And on the seller's side, there's interest because of reduced demand for hotels. So we do anticipate multiple applications. We've been talking with a variety of entities that are in various stages of either looking at or pursuing this opportunity to convert a hotel to permanent residential use. And often that's done by merging multiple rooms into one dwelling unit. So it could be two rooms into one dwelling unit, could be three rooms into one dwelling unit. Or if you had a very large hotel room, it it could become a small efficiency unit. And the developers really report that this is a low cost and very quick method to add housing. On the negative side, our our big concern is with the lost lodging taxes that would result from the loss in hotel rooms. So a little bit about Extended Stay America, Hennepin County does have a purchase agreement on that property. That purchase agreement is fully contingent on local, or in this case, Bloomington approvals. There are one hundred and four rooms in the hotel. And most of those have small kitchenettes. They are not full kitchens, but they do have burners and refrigerators, sink, etc. So the county will be requesting a two year interim use permit. And their proposal again is to use the hotel for to house homeless individuals who are at high risk for COVID nineteen. And that risk could be due to age, or it could be due to medical condition. And then after the pandemic, the county plans to convert this building, working with a private developer, selling the building to convert it to permanent housing that would advance the City Council's strategic housing objectives. So we do have an application in before the city right now on that site from the Hennepin County. And that includes four approvals. First of all, regiding the site from office and hotel use to high density residential. Rezoning to the RM fifty zoning district. A major revision to development plans to use the building for Temporary Pandemic Response Housing. And then a interim use permit, again, that they would, they are requesting a two year interim use as Temporary Pandemic Response Housing. So public hearings are scheduled on this item November nineteenth at Planning Commission and November twenty third at the City Council.
So when it comes to enforcement, we have several mechanisms we can utilize to achieve compliance after we've tried, you know, education, written notices, things like that. Some of those mechanisms for enforcement include excessive use of city services fees. These fees can be, you know, either violations to city code or state laws. And the the fees, first, we have two warning notices. And with the first warning notice, the property is then monitored due to frequent service calls. You know, when you calls for service, or you might want to call them complaints, where police, environmental health, building inspections, fire, where we're called to investigate, you know, something that's happening or deal with, you know, some issue that's going on, some code violation. The third in the sequence and subsequent notices can then charge a fee for the cost of that service to respond to a verified violation of state or city code. Obviously, we want to apply this when it's a metal, a call for medical assistance, it would be, you know, more things, you know, along city code lines or or, you know, possible, you know, fights or or other disturbance of the peace type services. And our our minimum fee that we can assess under code is two hundred and fifty dollars for that service, but it can go all the way up to two thousand dollars if you itemize, you know, what it actually costs the city for those services, you know, how many police officers or or, you know, how much time or what might have been actually spent in 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 providing the service to that property for that service call. So we do use excessive use of services. Most properties, after they get one or two notices, they tend to come into compliance. We don't issue a lot of these fees, which then can be assessed if not paid. And I think it's got the attention of a couple of hotels. At least one hotel I know that we have issued to is made them kind of stand up and and listen a little more and 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 think about the type of calls. Other other things that we use to enforce, let's say, city code violations or city city zoning code violations. After a series of written notices and education, we they can lead to civil fines. We call them administrative penalty orders. They range from two hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars, depending on the fine schedule and the section of the code. Or to enforce the city zoning code requirements. Also, the city could work towards court ordered injunction to stop some type of use on a property. The third mechanism is criminal prosecution, something obviously that our legal department handles for mainly police, might be violations of state law, sometimes city codes. And then the last category, city license suspension or revocation. So environmental health uses the temporary suspension of a license to close a business while they're working to correct something serious. And then we open them as soon as they get it corrected, for example, a sewage backup. Or, you know, some type of utility failure would be a reason to suspend a license for a short period of time until they can make needed repairs, clean up, and come back into compliance, and then we open them up. But the other thing that our city code allows is because the city issues the license, the City Council does have the authority to revoke a license. It's not something, you know, we do very often. But council does have the authority to do this after a public hearing. Council can act upon it. And I think in the progression of enforcement mechanisms, you know, you start with education and you work to through written notices, you work through civil fines. It's sort of like a scale and work up to things that, you know, carry a lot more weight and in our, you know, a lot more evidence to process to show that there's been this continuing issue going on. Like to actually, you know, revoke a license is is a is 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 a larger process that, you know, takes a lot more consideration and evidence of the of the problems at the property. Next slide.
Good evening, Mayor members of council. I think I'm hearing a little feedback on this. Is it, does it all work for you?
You sound good now, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. So I'm here this evening to talk about the distinction under law between a guest and a tenant, and then the implications for tenancy in light of extended hotel stays and the current eviction moratorium. So hotel guests are traditionally considered transient occupants because they usually only reside at a property for a short period of time. And that expectation and that occupancy, the transient nature and short term is reflected in Minnesota law. Hotel owners have wide latitude to eject hotel guests from their property with little procedure. And so long as an owner maintains an innkeeper's license, hotel staff may remove guests or refuse admission to guests or potential guests who don't pay, who are obviously intoxicated, who violate posted hotel rules, and under another specific authority that's memorialized, excuse me, in Minnesota statutes. Now, when a person is a tenant, we tend to think of a tenant as a traditional sort of apartment tenant who is due formal eviction proceedings. And formal eviction proceedings are required to remove those traditional tenants from properties. So different standards for a person who's paying money for space for a short period of time versus a person who's paying, you know, dollars for a space for a longer person a time. And that is, you know, triggered with protections or process to which they're entitled. Now, each state has its own rules determining whether or when a transient occupant becomes a recognized, recognized under the law as a tenant. And for example, in California, it's a statutory set marker. It's thirty days in a place of occupancy and that person becomes a tenant. Now, in the state of Minnesota, whether a person is eligible for tenant protection depends upon the facts and circumstances of their particular situation. There's a rebuttable presumption within state law that if the guest has no other place that they live and they pay rent, that they are a tenant. And the the length of a person's stay, the existence of a special contract, the rate or or pay method of payment, whether their personal belongings are stored at the hotel. And then, most importantly, perhaps, whether they have another residence away from the hotel are material facts in analyzing whether a person is entitled to tenant protection. So if a person is a tenant, if the those facts and circumstances reflect that they are a tenant, do protection and process under state law, then rather than being immediately removed under a trespass, that trespass action, trespass action when you're dealing with the innkeeper standard, the tenant receives the additional process of the eviction action. And so this is where these definitions are important in thinking about our the eviction moratorium that's in place. So the Governor's Executive Order, which is twenty seventy nine, took effect on August fourth. And that order suspends evictions within the state of Minnesota. A tenant specifically cannot be evicted for non-payment of rent, but rent is still due upon the expiration of the moratorium. For existing residents whose lease or tenancy has expired, and you know, for that more traditional sense, a landlord cannot terminate or issue a non-renewal of a lease or give a tenant notice to vacate while the moratorium is in effect. That being said, there are exemptions to this rule. Evictions may be filed against tenants where there is evidence of significant damage to the property. If the if property damage is a material violation of of the existing lease or the agreement between the landlord and tenant. If they are remaining and if the tenant is remaining in the property and the landlord or their family is moving into the property. So you might think of this rather than in a traditional multifamily context where a person owns essentially a rental property or duplex and their family would need to to access that as a shelter. And that would be a reason to evict an existing tenant. If the tenant is seriously endangering endangering the safety of other residents or seriously endangering the safety of others on property on the property. And finally, there's a litany of evicable offenses, including manufacturer use of controlled substances in Minnesota statutes that are also subject to active eviction orders at this point in time. In terms of how this process works and the the implementation of the eviction moratorium, the Minnesota Attorney General's Office oversees compliance for the Governor's order and has established an online complaint process for tenants to contact the AG's office for support. And the AG's office has opined specifically that those residents of hotels who do not have other residency, whose stays have exceeded a typical one to two week stay and who store all or most of their personal belongings on site and are relying on that hotel for housing, are tenants within the meaning of state law and are protected by the eviction moratorium. So we go the the sort of the progression of this is that a hotel operator may go from an innkeeper to the heightened standards of a landlord, and then as they become the heightened standards of a landlord and the guest moves from a traditional guest to a tenant, that then those eviction moratorium protections then would apply to them as well. Next slide, please, Glenn.
So Mayor and Council, we come back to this slide. These are the objectives that we're applying to this effort as we think about the use of hotels and, excuse me, the use of hotels as shelters, at least on a temporary basis, and thinking about how we handle. basis, and thinking about, um, how we handle, uh, the rights of people who are living in those hotels for more than thirty days in terms of their, uh, rights as potential tenants. And so we wanted to, to give you all that information this evening and check in with you and ensure that we're on the right path. We will be bringing, uh, forward Hennepin County's, uh, application as Glenn mentioned, and we will also be updating you regularly on the work of the homeless and shelter work group that, uh, was established last week. So we're ready to stand for questions and specifically just want to check in with you about these five objectives that we've, uh, laid out here for you.
Well, first of all, thank you, uh, Ms. Worthington. Thanks for all your work. Thanks to the entire staff for the work. That was a very comprehensive and very helpful overview of what, uh, what, what's going on, what we're facing here. And, um, appreciate the fact that, uh, this was looked at more universally and more comprehensively and not just as a police issue, not just as a zoning issue, but this was, this was looked at very comprehensively, and I appreciate that because I think it, it is a, it is a bigger issue than, than just a law enforcement, uh, right and wrong, um, kind of issue. And to look at it in that way, I think adds different perspective to it and different perspective as to what we're talking about here. Uh, also appreciate the, the different, uh, nuance to all of this. There's not, this is not a black and white issue. There is, uh, there's a lot of gray in there, and I think most particularly the, the discussion that we just wrapped up here, the, uh, the different definitions of a, of a resident, of a, of, of a renter, uh, what the eviction moratorium, what the, the different pieces of that puzzle are, what powers that the, the city actually does have and doesn't have, and where we just honestly don't know right now, depending on, uh, where this all shakes out and how it would be decided, uh, at the state, at the state level or levels above the city, uh, council, and I think that is a definite possibility. So there are a lot of questions to this and, uh, there's a lot of pieces to this and, um, it, it's a good, it's a good starting point for our discussion. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, I have a couple of questions and also really want to express my deepest gratitude for, um, all of the work that has gone into this and all of the work that you guys have been doing in partnership with all of the other organizations and businesses involved. I know in my conversations with, um, various city staff, uh, I know this has been just constant, and so thank you. Um, so, uh, I appreciated the slide on kind of the, the enforcement mechanisms, and I was curious, I see that in, um, in one of your slides on the proposed zoning amendments, there was, there was a section on creating standards, so it included, um, security plan, the management and operations plan, um, and then the requirement not to have, um, any other uses on site. And so if, um, if a, um, entity that was, you know, using a hotel in this way were to, um, propose a security plan, but a year in, they aren't following that security plan, would that then be a violation of our city, the city code, and then we could start enforcement mechanisms? Is that the way? Are those pieces part of, would that then become part of our city code and part of the agreements? If that makes sense?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Carter, the way the interim use permit would work, uh, that would be an enforceable provision within the interim use permit.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, so then going to the eviction moratorium, one of the things, the, one of the points that you had said was a requirement to pay, to be paying. And, um, so if, in the case of shelters, it really, as it relates to this conversation, if people are not paying, are they still covered by the eviction moratorium? Are they still protected under that if they're not, if they're not actually paying anything?
To defer to Megan Rogers.
Um, it, uh, the, it will depend upon, um, the facts and circumstances of each situation. Um, in our, in staff's review of much of the, many of the funding mechanisms that are utilized for these particular properties, um, many times there is, or, or in, in some circumstances, uh, there is, uh, a cost associated per individual resident or individual person utilizing the hotel room. Um, and that cost is attributable to that individual. Um, and I, I think it's reasonable to assume that, um, in, in putting those costs to an actual person and that person is receiving those services, um, that they are meeting the definition of, of payment in exchange for, uh, for housing or space. Um, and then in the broader scope, um, you know, especially when it comes to the nonprofit organizations that may be, uh, less, um, formalized than the, the historic nonprofit organizations, um, that, that receive, uh, state level, um, or county level funding, um, those organizations are, are paying for the rooms, um, and they're paying for those people to live in the rooms. And they, um, the, uh, there, I think that there is also, um, there's, someone is paying for those specific individuals who have been highlighted by the organization as someone in need to live in those spaces. Um, and so I think there's, there is also an argument to admit they are protected by the eviction moratorium as well.
Okay. Um, so my last question, uh, it's very clear to me how this applies to Hennepin County, um, but I'm curious then for the other nonprofits that are, um, renting, uh, some rooms, but all, not all of the rooms on a property. Um, what would be the impact to those nonprofits and those hotels?
In the case of, uh, Councilmember Carter, Mayor Bussey, in the case of the Hennepin County purchase of the extended stay and any kind of zoning or land use guidance changes that result, those do not impact the other shelters, uh, hotel shelters in the city, the Comfort Inn specifically, or the Holiday Inn, uh, which will continue to be operated by Hennepin County.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of questions here. Um, I'll try to go quick here. Um, so if we look at, um, slide number thirteen, um, I just had some questions around, uh, affordable housing and, uh, some of our standards that we have, uh, for hotels. Um, and so when we're looking at that conversion, um, that we're talking about, um, uh, how do some of those things relate to some of our, uh, we have our opportunity housing, uh, piece, and, um, how would that, uh, impact, uh, the conversion from those hotels, uh, if they wanted to say, use some of that property for, uh, uh, as an affordable housing piece?
Yes, uh, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, the opportunity housing ordinance would have an impact on a conversion. Uh, there are various incentives, uh, that a converting developer might want to take advantage of. For example, the opportunity housing ordinance allows a smaller, uh, minimum unit size. And if you're converting a large hotel room, um, that may be a way, uh, to have a smaller unit size. Uh, for example, Bloomington requires a minimum four hundred square feet for an efficiency unit. Uh, not many hotel rooms are that large, uh, but we do have hotel rooms that are in the three hundred and fifty, uh, square feet range. So by taking advantage of the incentives and hitting certain affordability targets, uh, they could, uh, reduce that minimum required area, uh, down to three hundred and sixty or even further, depending on the affordability level, square feet.
Thanks, that's just a good example. I, I, I know that from looking at the marketplace, uh, for this, uh, this may be what ends up happening to that market, uh, given the circumstances we find ourselves in. Uh, moving on to, um, uh, slide number fifteen, um, when we're looking at licensing requirements, I'm, I'm curious about how other, uh, cities, um, and maybe I'll ask, I've got another question about this that's later on too, I'll just put these all together. So how do cities handle these licensing requirements? Um, and then also how do other cities handle, uh, uh, when we look at homelessness and shelters, how do they handle that in their zoning code? And we also have it, uh, in a sense, uh, in our, um, our planning documents that are out there, our comprehensive plan, we, we talk about what we want to do around this. Um, a- any comments on, on those, those three different, uh, documents there?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, uh, I'll address licensing. So, uh, most cities operate like, like we do, um, and have rental housing licenses. Or if you are a city or the county that has the delegation agreement for hotel and food service license, um, you might use something that's called a, a hotel-like license, a lodging license. It all depends upon, um, how the building is run and operated, um, depending upon if you, uh, are really have beds or if you have dwelling units. So if you have dwelling units, we're usually talking more, you know, that multifamily license. Um, when you have a bed, um, in Bloomington or group housing, where you have like your food services shared, you know, that's how we license it. But, um, and, and, you know, o- other cities, um, might have a license category a little bit different though. Um, just saying, this is what we have on the books right now, um, in city code and through our delegation agreement to state.
So Glenn, one thing that would be helpful from me, a- as I look at this is, you know, if we look at what Minneapolis is doing and maybe what another suburban area is kind of doing, just as a comparison, so just as when we, we're going in to make this decision, uh, uh, come, uh, November, uh, where this may be, uh, it would just be helpful to kind of just have you just a sample, example, just to kind of help to understand how those other cities deal with, uh, with some of these license requirements, to see if there's something that, that's missed. I'm sure you're looking at that, but it just would be helpful to just kind of have, to see how those are organized.
Sure.
And then, uh, Glenn, did you have any comments on the other two items?
Sure, uh, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, on the second item, uh, these categories are fairly common in other cities, you know, hotel versus multifamily residential, uh, various, versus various forms of congregate living. Um, I think you'll see some cities probably call out, uh, different subsets of congregate living and may treat them differently, uh, depending on impacts of, of each subset. Um, I think a lot of suburban communities probably have not, um, gone as far as creating separate standards for shelter type uses, so that's probably more rare in a suburban setting, uh, more common in a larger city. And then in terms of the, uh, comprehensive plan, it certainly talks a lot about housing affordability and homelessness as well, um, with targets for affordability at various levels, including thirty percent and below, uh, which the hotels represent kind of a unique opportunity to address that portion of the market. And then the comprehensive plan talks about, uh, homelessness, housing insecurity, and the importance of addressing that. Uh, you know, this is a regional issue, it's a statewide issue, uh, but it's also a Bloomington issue as part of the region, and, uh, the plan talks about doing, uh, Bloomington's fair share.
So Glenn, you know, um, you know, some, uh, residents have reached out to me and, and there, some of their concerns around this are, because I don't think, as I remember reading through the comprehensive plan, uh, we don't really target where, uh, these areas are at. Um, uh, and so, um, maybe I missed it in there, um, uh, but, uh, if, if we start moving down this pathway of looking to provide this congregate living or shelter, uh, type areas in Bloomington, um, you know, normally with other zoning areas, we have a, have a plan. Uh, do you recall there being a plan in our, uh, uh, in our comprehensive plan around that? I just don't recall seeing something like that.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, there's no specific plan, uh, set out in the comprehensive plan on that, on that issue.
Just one, two real quick ones here, um, uh, on the enforcement pieces here, uh, that we have, has Faith Jackson had a chance to, to review that enforcement, uh, uh, piece that we have there?
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Lohman, Mayor Bussey, uh, Faith is part of the work group that will be reviewing, um, the policy and enforcement, uh, side of this work.
One of my concerns that I have with this particular setup for enforcement, um, is this just unique to this group of folks, or is this something we're going to, um, apply equally across, uh, different uses, uh, in the city? Uh, I just, I get concerned, uh, with just protected classes of people, uh, that our enforcement seems a little different, and I don't necessarily need to have the answer now, uh, but that's something that I'll be looking at, uh, when we get to that November, uh, meeting that, uh, I'll be interested to see what her commentary, uh, is on that, uh, once we get to that point.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, the progressive enforcement model is something the city, um, applies consistently across licensed and regulated businesses and housing. Uh, and so this is a, a common, consistent way that we, uh, provide enforcement on a progressive basis. So starting very, um, at the very beginning by issuing a letter notifying, uh, the owner or resident that they are in violation, and then working with them to try and problem solve, um, to reach a successful conclusion that does not include further enforcement. Um, so that, that is always our goal.
Does that also include these fine, uh, schedules as well with these?
That is correct.
Okay, well, good, I just want to be sure that we're enforcing this, uh, equally across, uh, our city. This is not something, uh, new or drafted up, uh, for this, uh, class of people that are moving in city. I think that's, I've covered all of my, my questions here, um, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, early on in the presentation, Chief Potts, uh, presented the schedule that showed, uh, the number of calls to various establishments. And, uh, recently he's been able to define medical calls, and I would like some more information as to what those medical calls relate to. Are they, um, do they include calls for things such as drug overdose and excessive consumption of alcohol?
Mayor, uh, Councilmember?
Chief Potts, please.
Yeah, thank, uh, sure, yeah, Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Beloga, uh, those, those, uh, numbers with the asterisks include what we'll consider a medical, which could include an overdose, um, or a crisis call that's also treated, uh, as a medical situation. So there's a wide range of medicals. It can be, uh, somebody who is experiencing chest pains. It can be somebody who is experiencing, um, very mild medical, a, a very mild medical emergency. So, um, I don't have a breakdown of the specific types of medicals. The short answer to your question is yes, it does include, uh, overdose calls, it includes crisis calls, it may include a, uh, alcohol-related call, although that's probably going to be categorized into a different, uh, call type than a medical. Uh, but there is a wide range of medical calls that are being, uh, made from these locations, and, uh, you are specifically correct in that it could include an overdose.
So could we get, uh, an analysis for a period of time? If it's October, September, you know, the remainder of October, something of that nature, into how many are, um, what I'll call, uh, non-self-inflicted medical, uh, calls? As opposed to, um, the other medical calls, the heart attacks, stroke, uh, uh, you know, slip and falls, those types of things? So what I'm trying to do is, is gauge what the quantity of that self-inflicted, uh, issue is. Is it half of what the medical calls are, or is it a quarter, three quarters?
Uh, Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Beloga, we'll have to scrub that data and look at the individual call notes on each one of them. I don't even want to hazard a guess at this point as to how many of them would be considered what you're calling, uh, self-inflicted versus other types of medical, but we can certainly look closer at that data and try to come up with.
Yeah, and, and I don't want to guess either, and that's why, you know, if we had an analysis for some period of time, uh, that would be appreciated. Thanks, Chief. Uh, the, um, the chart shows that, uh, really this started picking up about six months ago in April. And, uh, so we've got, uh, quite a bit of history in dealing with what's going on in the community. So my next couple of questions are, is, uh, um, what's the, uh, what's the counts on what we have done? what's the uh, what's the counts on what we have done in response? Uh, other than the meetings and things that we've discussed already. Uh, we've talked about the progressive uh nature of our uh dealing with violations. So uh, but in the active part of it, now that we're at the the six-month stage. How many letters have we issued to institutions? And then how many notices have we issued? And and I'm not sure who the person would be that could address that.
Mayor Bussey, sorry, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Beloga, I'd like to just quickly say that um, in terms of excessive consumption notices or the NIN process that the city uses. Um, these are for property owners or license holders. They are not for individuals and that goes to uh Councilmember Lohman's earlier question about um progressive enforcement. We have issued one NIN for the Comfort Inn.
I I understand that uh it's the property owner that uh gets the notices and letters. And uh so there's been one um, one enforcement action, escalated enforcement action, I will call it. Is that a fair terminology to apply?
We are currently working with the owner of the Comfort Inn to resolve uh his excessive consumption of police services in particular.
And did that include a fine?
Uh, he he's not at that point yet, Councilmember Beloga.
I I would uh, you know, looking at the numbers sort of disagree with that, but uh that's uh not for the discussion tonight. We have a lot of uh residents uh who are entering the neighborhoods around these hotels. I think uh City Council just received on Sunday afternoon another email. I get a call or an email generally about once a day on average. Uh, giving us uh an example of a situation similar to this. Uh, in this instance, uh, a a person came at seven AM to the front door, rang the bell. And wanted to enter the residence home. Uh, they wanted uh the resident to call an ambulance because they said they had a foot injury. The resident complied and called nine-one-one. Uh, police responded, but the man who was the requestor of the service uh took off before they arrived. How, how do we track the numbers of calls within the surrounding area from each one of these hotels? Uh, say in a two or three-block area? Or do we not do that type of thing?
Chief Potts?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, that is uh, you know, part of the the challenge in this is that it's a, it is a frankly, difficult to um kind of trace tho- all of those calls directly to a particular hotel. Uh, so what uh what you're seeing on this chart is a breakdown of the monthly calls. Um, the, the, the challenges that call that you're talking about that we received the email on. Um, while we've seen uh calls like that and increase in those calls, increase in those types of emails being sent to the city. What's hard for me to do is produce a slide uh that shows what that increase looks like. Um, but you, you are uh correct in that we are getting those emails and those kinds of calls on somewhat of a regular basis. Um, and again, it's a, it's a very difficult to attach that to a specific hotel. Uh, we do think it is uh some, you know, in in some way, uh in some capacity, the result of uh additional folks who are um in kind of housing crisis or homeless uh in the area of these hotels or in Bloomington. Uh, but again, from a, from a statistical standpoint, from a data standpoint, it's hard uh to, to generate a report that will show you specifically where each and every one of those calls is taking place.
Well, if if uh I I understand your uh response and I understand the uh uh immense difficulty of uh the request. But if, if there is a way, and I'm not necessarily trying to say uh, so it's the Comfort Inn versus the Super Eight or La Quinta. But uh, you know, because they, they all service generally uh that same area. Uh, if, if we can look at uh what's happened in those neighborhoods with the calls for service. And and do a similar uh uh view of that uh to what you did to the hotels, just, just the surrounding geography. I think that would be instructive as to what the total impact is on crime in our city. You know, there, there was no crime committed here, but I think it erodes the feeling of safety and security that people have. When people are approaching them, approaching their residents, knocking on their door. Uh, demanding uh money or housing, uh showing belligerence when uh they don't uh receive their request. And uh, uh, it, it just puts those folks in a very difficult position. And I think we need to do something that's beyond the norm and look at how we can respond. Uh, not only to their needs, but to increase uh back to pre-COVID days. What their level of comfort was in their neighborhood. It's gotten to the extent that I uh had a conversation with a gentleman who I personally know. Who uh less than twelve months ago moved uh into uh one of our Bloomington neighborhoods, uh came from Richfield. And uh he called me to tell me that uh, uh, with what's going on in the neighborhood. Uh, he's uh putting his house up for sale and has signed a listing agreement. I mean, that, that's not something that people do lightly. And we really, you know, I, I, I feel for them. I don't know what to do with them, you know, for them frankly. Um, but uh I think that if we just ignore the crime statistics in those areas and not target, and I'm not saying that uh the police are not, because I uh, I have the greatest faith that they are, I just like what that information is and what it looks like.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, we will uh continue to look for ways to track that. And uh find ways that we might be able to uh show some type of a chart or some data. Uh, again, we'll just, we'll have to go back to to uh kind of how we're analyzing our CAT data. And uh and look for ways to track calls in the vicinity of uh some of those hotels and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, um, and and, you know, these are uh people crying out for help. And uh, we, we haven't verbalized that very well at council. And this is my attempt to to really say, we're hearing your uh calls for help. And we're looking at those and we're working on responses. So uh again, I think that uh, uh Chief, under your leadership, our department uh is run exceedingly well. And it's just giving demonstrations of what's happening and how we're responding to it that I feel we need to. So thanks, I appreciate your uh comments.
Thank you. Council, additional questions? Actually, if you could go to the slides specifically about the extended stay hotel, if you could please, with uh the Hennepin County conditions. I see you, Nathan, I'll get to you in just a second. Uh, yes, thank you for, for this. And um, so I, I had a question on this specifically about some of the specifics in here. Um, where it talks about uh homeless individuals at risk for, high risk for COVID nineteen based on age or medical condition. Now, um, I guess I'm, I, I honestly and and with all my heart believe that addiction issues and mental health issues are indeed health issues. And uh I don't think it's correct to uh stigmatize them by saying these are self-inflicted issues in any way, shape, or form. These are health issues. Addiction and mental health issues are certainly health issues. Now, they bring with them a different set of uh circumstances and issues than uh what we think about traditional health issues. Whether it's a terminal illness or uh something that would make it, uh, you know, uh, make someone uh infirm or unable to leave their room. It certainly brings about a different level of uh issue when you're talking about specifically about uh medical conditions. But I wonder if we could have that discussion when we talk about uh the homeless individuals at high risk for COVID nineteen based on age or medical conditions. I'm wondering, staff, do we have any idea how we're defining medical condition? How is Hennepin County defining medical condition specifically in this example?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmembers, um, thank you for that question and for that clarification. Uh, addiction and mental health are considered medical conditions and they may be considered uh for this population. Uh, we do not have specific data because that is protected under HIPAA and other uh other legal restrictions on that data. Uh, but Hennepin County has assured us that the, um, in particular, the two groups that they're focusing on were the extended stay are elderly people who are at higher risk for COVID and people who are considered medically vulnerable. And so that is the current population of the two Holiday Inn hotel sites that they are operating. And the people who will um move into the extended stay site are coming from those sites. So there are already people who are in shelter in Bloomington and being moved into this um more uh a longer-term temporary shelter uh situation.
Thank you, that's helpful, I appreciate that. Now, if you could, uh, if you could also go to to the last slide, the, the discussion questions that we were working on here. And I had a specific question on, on the last bullet. So as we talk about maintaining discretion and when necessary and after progressive enforcement, which I agree with the, the notion of progressive enforcement. Pursue, pursue revocation of licensure for hotels that don't comply with city regulations, which I agree is a, is a significant step. But if we would have a revoc- revocation of licensure, that would obviously then be an eviction. So is that even doable under what we're facing right now uh from state law? I understand that eviction can take place for uh for criminal offenses or for use of narcotics or that kind of thing. But if we get to the point where we try and close down a specific hotel that evicts everybody, is that even doable? Is that even, um, is that even something we have in, in our, in our toolkit to deal with this based on the realities of today?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmembers, I'm going to ask Megan to speak to this as well. I think this is an area of um where there is not a good um body of case law yet on this. Because the Attorney General had ruled a few weeks ago that um certain people living in hotel shelters had tenants' rights. So if she could speak to that, that would be helpful.
Mayor Bussey, members of council, uh, I think um one of the important components of a license revocation is there's a significant notice process associated with it. Um, and so uh, uh, Anarum Community Development Director Worthington is correct in that this is sort of an unprecedented area and we haven't been faced with these competing issues um at the same time uh i- in our prior case law. Um, and so I think what would work to do um would be to find um to, to assist the existing providers um through our notice requirements and providing um other safe places for the people who are living in these facilities now. Um, to live safely um in, as we look towards the revocation process. And again, the revocation process would need to be based upon, um, you know, a finding of, of fact that a council that, that it was um no longer safe to operate. Um, the hotel as it stood um by the information that's presented to you at that point in time. Um, so, you know, with both of those things in mind, I think it's a, it would be a collaborative process um in that regard.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's uh, it doesn't exactly clarify things, but I at least under- understand a little bit better where it might be coming from. Uh, and the final notion that I want to uh at least address a little bit is, is this notion that um, that, that somehow we're the, the city in general, the city is um, has, is, is just hearing this and we're just moving forward on this and just trying to uh react to this in some way. And uh I, I would argue, I, I think that's probably a surprise to our police department who's been working on this uh extensively for the past six or eight weeks and have put in a lot of hours and a lot of time. And have done an outstanding job dealing with a very, very difficult situation. Uh, also the fact that this, I think, is like the third or I believe maybe even the fourth meeting in a row that we've talked about this. And uh it's back to my earlier point, this is a difficult situation with uh, with, with more nuance than I think, than we can really put our heads around. Especially considering that we're uh in the middle of a, a global pandemic and uh all that comes with it, uh that happens once every one hundred years. So um, uh, I appreciate the, the concerns that we, we hear from residents, I absolutely do. And I've heard them, I've heard them daily on, on myself and both phone calls and emails and so on. And, and I want folks to know that um we, the work is underway and has been underway for a number of weeks now. Both from our, our police, our environmental health, our legal department, trying to get their arms around a very difficult situation. And this uh presentation tonight, I think, has been very helpful to really kind of take this out of, as I said earlier, out of the police realm. And to put it into the larger realm of uh licensing, of uh the, the, the social service aspect of all that goes into this. And uh I think it, it will help to frame our discussions as we, as we continue to move forward on this. Councilmember Coulter, I saw you waving at me earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so just a, um, first of all, just a, a quick question, just to clarify. Um, it is assuming, of course, this moves forward, um, it would require an interim use permit. Who would, who would actually be applying for the interim use permit? Would it be the hotel?
Uh, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Coulter, uh, the hotel would be acquired by Hennepin County. And Hennepin County will be the applicant for the interim use permit.
Okay, so that, that, I guess, I maybe didn't phrase that correctly. That would be the case for this, for the, the extended stay specifically. But if we, I mean, this is, I mean, this is a, a zoning code amendment, so then this goes into our, our, our city code. So I guess the, the answer to my question is, is, for lack of a better phrase, whoever owns the hotel. Is that correct?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Coulter, that is correct. Land use applications are made by the owner of the real property.
Okay, so then if hypothetically, we, there were another situation where um, say a nonprofit or, or some other organization were uh to contract with a hotel, where, where they wanted to contract with a hotel for this purpose. Um, I guess my, my question is, would, um, so in, in that particular instance, if, if it's still an operating hotel, it would be whoever owns that operating hotel. That's correct?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Coulter, um, there are no other hotels who could apply for this uh particular interim use because they're not in the right zoning district. So um the other element of this, I think, is important is that um the contract, contract party, the provider cannot apply for a land use change on behalf of the owner. So there are multiple um layers of restrictions here, if you will, on the, the land use itself. And then the, the land use and regiding, rezoning has to occur prior to the issuance of an interim use permit.
Okay, okay, I think that, that kind of gets at my overall question, which is sort of thinking beyond just this individual proposal. What comes next? I, I think you, you got to that. Um, I guess, um so, and, and then I guess uh the only other question I, I have is obviously, you know, and again, this relates to sort of what comes next. Because, you know, we, we saw COVID sort of, I mean, there were the, of course, warning signs, but it, it came upon us. And the, the result of, of what we needed to do to combat it came upon us rather quickly. And so I guess my, my question is if there, say, is another spike and suddenly there is a or, you know, we get into the winter and for whatever reason, there is a significant demand for this. Um, I mean, I, I guess my, my question is sort of how does enforcement? I, my concern is that, you know, as, as in, if there is such a significant spike. And, you know, how do we, how are we tracking these things beyond sort of calling up hotel operators and trusting that they're going to give us the honest truth? I, I guess my question is just if, if we are, if things get out of hand, if, if it's, if there is just a lot going on. What's to essentially stop a, a hotel operator or someone? is just a lot going on, what's to essentially stop a hotel operator or someone just saying, "Well, you know, we just lowered our rates and folks showed up"? Does that make sense?
Mayor Bussey, councilmember Coulter, I appreciate the question. I think there's a couple of things that I can offer. I don't have a single answer to that question, but the things that I would offer are, first of all, that Hennepin County, as a major provider of shelter in the West Metro, is purchasing other properties to utilize for shelter. So their shelter capacity is expanding right now. And that is directly in response to the continued sort of severity of the pandemic. And then the second thing I would offer is that, as we think about shelter operations generally, if the pandemic starts to ease, congregate facilities will be another option that will be more available because you will be able to put more people into those congregate facilities. Right now, they're having to decrease the number of residents in those facilities to, in order to achieve social distancing. The last thing I would just offer is that, especially as regards the county's intake process, they are attempting to make sure that they have the right beds, the right facilities for people depending on their situation. And one area that continues to be a challenge for the county and for other agencies in the metro area is the existence of enough treatment beds for people who are either experiencing a mental health crisis or a drug or alcohol addiction crisis. And so those tend to be the most difficult beds to locate. And so I know that Hennepin County is also trying to cite treatment facilities and shelter beds that are considered low barrier for people who are actively using drugs and alcohol or people who are experiencing a mental health crisis. And so they are attempting to expand their capacity to serve those clients as well. And so it is difficult to look into a crystal ball right now and determine what will happen the next few months, but I do feel like we're beginning to get our arms around this idea of the shelter capacity of Hennepin County and all of the communities within Hennepin County and have a better accounting of that that we can report back to you on at a future meeting.
Thank you. And I think the broader point, of course, is just that folks are thinking about it, that that is something being talked about. So that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Baron, and I won't prolong this too much, just kind of a couple of quick questions here. Well, then I guess, first of all, I just want to add my thanks as well to staff. I know I've worked in some of these kind of congregate care and shelter facilities and really seen kind of the heroic work that a lot of these nonprofits are doing to guarantee safety for folks that are staying there. And to have this once-in-a-lifetime crisis pop up and have city staff step up to guarantee or work to guarantee safety for these folks in our hotels as well as residents, that's pretty heroic as well. So I very much appreciate all that work. So I guess, kind of with the nitty-gritty, so in terms of preserving safety, I appreciated the outline you provided on kind of the progressive kind of warnings, going into notices, and then potentially charging for services. What would be the cadence of that communication with the property owner from, say, the first warning to, gosh forbid, revoking a license? Just because I know we're on a deadline of June 2021, so would we realistically get through this whole arc in eight months with the property?
Ms. Worthington?
You know, thank you, Mayor Bussey, councilmember Martin. Certainly in my past experience in other cities, you can get through that arc of progressive enforcement within a relatively short period of time. I think what's important, excuse me, to remember is that, once we begin that progressive enforcement action, what we're really looking for from the property owner is, we're looking for an effort to correct what we've called out that needs correction. And we're looking at progress towards resolving the enforcement action itself. And as long as property owners are making progress towards those goals, we want to work with them to ensure that they're successful. It is much better in the end for the city in terms of, so the legality issues that are, that arise in this process, it's much simpler for us to get, to get compliance rather than to issue additional fines and revoke a license. So that's always our goal, is to try and get compliance. And I know that I can speak for community development, in particular, environmental health and BNI, we're working quite a bit with this property owner to get compliance. And I know Chief Potts and his team are as well.
That's great to hear. Thank you. And also, just to clarify, so the other enforcement mechanism, it said that level of service expectations may end up being different at some of these properties. Can you just kind of clarify what that would look like in practice?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey, councilmember Martin. Really what we're talking about here is that I think, I think council and the community should anticipate that there will be a slightly higher call for service volume on these properties. By the very nature of the services that they're providing, the population they're working for, we may see additional calls in these locations. And what we want to check in with you about is, do you have a comfort level with that? In other words, knowing that we might not go back to 2019 levels of calls for service that in fact we may see a fairly consistently higher call for service volume on some of these properties despite doing things like active 24/7 security and working with the providers to ensure that the buildings themselves are secured. This situation, in particular with the Comfort Inn, it draws a different level of clientele. And they're coming to the hotel looking for shelter, and they're being told to return downtown to Hennepin County to go through centralized intake. So they're, they're already in the area, and sometimes that generates a call for service. And I'm not sure that we want to just manage expectations. I'm not sure that it's reasonable to expect that we will not continue to see some behavior in those, in those locations that will generate police calls.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mayor, just one more quick one, if I may. So you had mentioned a security plan as being mandated by the interim use permits. I know, as you had mentioned earlier, with kind of the scarcity of beds for folks in mental health crisis or chemical dependency, is having access to stuff like, our folks like social service staff, is that able to be included as a component of that security plan? Just to make sure that as folks are staying in these facilities, they have access to the resources they need as opposed to just kind of the room and see how things go? Or is that security kind of in the traditional sense of just basic public safety?
Mayor Bussey and councilmember Martin, so there's two, really two different buckets here. One is a public safety bucket, which is a security plan, and that's something Chief Potts and his team have worked with Hennepin County on. And then there is a separate requirement that social services or onsite services be provided to the residents of that building. So both.
Terrific. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Council, additional specific questions? Or if not, looking at the screen in front of you there, the general objectives, the framework that staff has put together, the objectives of serving community needs, preserving safety, and maintaining discretion. Any further discussion on that? Or do we think that is the correct way to proceed with this as we, as we make our way forward? Councilmember Baloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the preserve safety, I would like to add of our residents also. This is internally directed to the people receiving the service, as I read it. And I think we also need to have great concern for our residents and their safety.
So an additional bullet point under preserve safety about the residents of Bloomington, not just the progressive enforcement model in the hotels and the high level of service expectation based on the shelters. I think that makes, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Others? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. And I don't know if it would technically go here or just also pairing this with a push if we can, maybe in our legislative priorities document that we've put together for additional state and hopefully county funding for staff to provide support services to the folks in these shelters, just so we're not putting a problem on pause, but we're actually helping folks to get into more stable housing long term.
Couldn't agree more, and I think that's probably one of the overarching objectives that I would like to take on, that I keep saying and have said for a long time, this is not a Bloomington issue, this is a, this is a metro issue, this is a statewide, this is a national issue. And for, for all of this to come down to a back and forth between Hennepin County and the city of Bloomington on dealing with all this is wrong because there, this is an issue that pervades everything that we do in this state, and we've overlooked it for too long. Plain and simple.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Martin, staff has already begun talking to members of the legislative delegation about issues for the 2021 session and where this might fit in.
Thank you.
Mayor Bussey, if I might add, I think this is an important opportunity for Bloomington to provide leadership in the metro around coordinated and consistent approaches to shelter and to permanent housing. I think that there is a, there is a lack of awareness about that, and I think that's an important role that you all can play.
Agreed. Thank you. Councilmember Carter and then councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to echo those sentiments. I totally agree. And I actually wonder if there could be kind of another bucket that is around kind of proactive planning, and that is exactly what, in my mind, exactly what we're talking about in terms of, you know, having conversations at the state level about kind of the bigger, longer-term, and more strategic way to address this issue. And then I even, and I also, I think there's another bullet point around, and I don't know if this could be included in the license or what kind of role we would have in this conversation, but proactively planning for when that two-year period of time is up and, you know, making sure that there, there's a good plan in place for the transition of the people living in that building. You know, I just don't want to, I trust that that will happen, but I guess I just feel the need to say it out loud because I would hate to get to a point where, you know, all of a sudden, we, you know, there's just not a very good plan, there's not a great plan in place toward the end of this two years. So proactive planning, you know, and then also these conversations at the state to make sure that we have a strategic approach, a strategic statewide approach.
Thank you. Councilmember Loman?
Well, I won't repeat everything there, but yes, certainly we have an opportunity here to be a little more proactive, we're kind of reacting to this situation, certainly that security piece and safety piece for our neighbors that are certainly an issue we need to address. But I alluded to it, my questions around a comprehensive plan, but I think that, and Heather's talked about this too, but I think there's a conversation in terms of how we want to zone this stuff kind of going forward. I mean, we are, you know, we're becoming, you know, we're moving towards being much more of an urban area, and these things are going to occur. And so we need to kind of look at how we're gonna, how we're gonna, how is this, these groups of folks that are going to be coming to Bloomington. So I think it's worth having that, that discussion that's kind of laid out, that comprehensive plan. I don't think it fits in this bucket here, but I think that spending some time around that so we can be proactive when that, as councilmember Carter has mentioned, in two years, we have not only a solution for those folks, but for folks who are yet to come to Bloomington, that, you know, I always talk about the city of Bloomington being a place of choice. That doesn't, that doesn't just apply to those folks who have, have wealth and income. I think that applies to all folks up and down, down that ladder. So I think it behooves us to look at that comprehensive plan and see where these folks would make sense to live within the city and have a real, real conversation about it.
Good points. Thank you for making those. Council, anything additional? Well, with those suggested additions, I think we can turn to staff and say, yes, we agree with the following objectives that are listed on the, on the screen in front of us that staff has presented. And to continue to move this forward, and this process continues. As we've said, there's, there's a decision coming up in November regarding the extended stay. We will continue, I hope, I expect, to get updates from city staff and on this and at this, perhaps not at this level, which was outstanding, once again, but for as much information as we need to make our decisions moving forward. Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just want to say thank you. I think the, the discussion tonight has been very helpful for staff, and I appreciate the thoughtful questions and consideration of council. Appreciate that.
Very good. With that, we will move on, move on to item 3.3 on our agenda. City Council Policy and Issues Update? Mr. Verbrugge, anything tonight?
No, thank you.
Nothing tonight from Mr. Verbrugge. Council, anything to add on our city council priority and issue update this evening? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to provide an update. I had my virtual community conversation event this past Saturday. I was ably assisted, and just wanted to give a thank you to Amanda Crabbie from our community outreach and engagement division. It was a really wonderful conversation. I think the total was, seven people showed up, most of whom were not even related to me. It was just a great conversation. We talked about a lot of different things, including a lot of the same things that we talked about tonight. So I just wanted to thank the folks who participated and give folks an update on that.
Very good. Councilmember Loman?
I had the opportunity with my wife and I, I come in and try out the early voting and just another shameless opportunity to remind folks to get out and vote. You can get it out of the way at City Hall over the next couple of days here and then, and then certainly next week. So don't forget to vote.
Agreed. Got it done already. We're down to, what, eight days, seven days? The clock is ticking. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Coulter?
Second, Martin?
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson? Councilmember Nelson, it looks like you're muted. Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries, six or seven zero, depending on where Sean is at this point. We are officially adjourned. Thanks much for the discussion this evening. Very well done. I thought it was a great discussion. Thanks again to staff for the great work that you did tonight as well. And thanks to the HRA for joining us also. Have a good night, everyone.